We call a regular monthly meeting of the Elswood City Council Order Monday, December 19th, 2016, 7:00 PM. All councilors are present with the exception of Mr. Moore, who has left the state. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand while we decide to play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Item three, Rules of Order. We follow Robert's Rules of Order plus rules and procedures that are adopted at the annual organizational meeting. Anyone in the audience has a cell phone or a pager, please be sure that it is off or silent at this time. Item four, Adoption of Minutes from the following meetings of the Elswood City Council. November 14th, 2016, Special Council Meeting. November 14th, 2016, Organizational Meeting. November 21st, 2016, Regular Council Meeting.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman. All three?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor unanimous. Item five, City Managers Reports.
A short report tonight, Mr. Chair. Coming to the end of the year, wrapping things up, staff will be taking some well-deserved time off over the holidays, but you'll always be able to reach some of us. And we're having our Christmas party on Friday at noon time, featuring the ugly sweater contest highlights, so sure, drop by and take a peek. That's it.
That's it. Thank you. Item six, Committee Reports. Any outside committees that met in the past month, do any councilors have information or news on any of those committees that met? Mr. Fortier?
Mr. Chairman, the Rec Commission met, had a lot of discussion on projects, and will continue having them projects for next spring and summer, looking towards the budget. We've had some damage at De Maya III on a light pole. We're starting to work on services to find out what's the fix up there. The big thing is the winter carnival's coming in February. We'll have more for that later. Ice skating rink, the boards are all up. We didn't get the liner in for that real big cold snap, and it looks like that was very fortunate because of the snow and all the rain this weekend would have ruined the ice sheet. So we'll pick a good time after the holiday to get that up when we've got freezing weather coming. But other than that, we've got a good group working, and Mark Blanchett escaped us and let Dawn sit in on it as a council member, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman. Mark Blanchett was busy with the parade committee, as were a lot of us, a couple Saturdays ago.
Thank you. No other committees? Move on to item seven, Citizens Comments. This portion of the agenda allows anybody in the audience to speak on anything that may be a concern or to be brought to our attention. If it's not on the agenda, you're allowed a couple of minutes. You're welcome to come to the podium and present your ideas. Seeing none, taking. Item eight, Presentation of Awards. There are two tonight, we'll do them one at a time. First one is for Alex De Pringer for five years of service as a paid-on-call firefighter with the Elswood Fire Department. Chief, should you come up? Alex, would you please come forward?
Hey. City of Elswood proudly presents the certificate of service to Alex De Pringer in recognition of his five years of service as a paid-on-call firefighter with the Elswood Fire Department. His devotion to duty and loyalty to his community has contributed to the improvement of City of Elswood. Presented this day, IT Day, December 2016. Thank you very much. And please give applause. The second goes to Stephen Kirby. Please come forward. City of Elswood proudly presents this certificate of service to Stephen Kirby in recognition of his five years of service as a paid-on-call firefighter with the Elswood Fire Department. His devotion to duty and loyalty to the community has contributed to the improvement of the City of Elswood. Presented this 19th day, December 2016.
Thank the two of you for spending time doing that. It's becoming a rare bird to have somebody that shows up. It's very much appreciated. Consent Agenda. All items under the consent agenda will be enacted as one item unless anyone from the council wishes to remove one. Item nine, Council Order 121601, Appointment of the City Clerk as Registrar of Voters with a Term to Expire on January 1st, 2019. Council Order 121602, Request of the City of Elswood Housing Authority for Confirmation of the Appointment of David Remick as a Tenant Representative to the Elswood Housing Authority with a Term to Expire, January 1st, 2021. Item 11, Council Order 121603, Request of the Deputy Treasurer or Tax Collector to Accept Payments on Tax-Aquied Time Share Units for the Attached Spreadsheet and to Authorize the City Manager to Release Said Properties Through Municipal Quit Claim Deeds. Those are the three. Any particular one, any member of the council like to remove? Hearing nobody, then they have a motion to enact all three?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All those in favor? New business. We have three licenses up for renewal tonight. First, and that's the beginning, all items have been met and satisfied by staff, Mr. Cole?
Yes.
First would be Finellas of Maine Incorporated, 12 Down East Highway, for renewal of a City Class C license, Victual Liquor, and renewal of a State Restaurant Liquor License, Malt and Vinous. We'll open the public hearing. Any comment on the request of Finellas to renew the license? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Council action on Finellas' request?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor? unanimous. Second item, Elswood CI LLC, Doing Business as the Elswood Comfort Inn, 130 High Street for Renewal of a City Lodging License. All requirements have been met, therefore, the public hearing is now open for any input from the public on that request. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Council action on the request of the Comfort Inn.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor? unanimous. Last item, Troy A. Adams, Doing Business as Jasper's Restaurant and Motel, 200 High Street, for a Lodging House License Only. This is a reclassification from the existing City Class A License, Victual Liquor Amusement and Lodging. Mr. Adams has met all requirements.
Yes.
Public hearing is now open. Any input and request of Jasper's Restaurant? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Council action?
At least on this issue. Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor? unanimous. Item 13, Council Order 121604, Request of the Fire Chief to Purchase Three Scott Self-Contained Breathing Apparatus and One Scott RIT Rapid Intervention Team Pack. Chief?
So this is a budgeted request. The only difference from the original budget request to what I'm proposing here is taking, we had budgeted for four SCBA's, we're asking to do three of them and then one rip pack. And the reason we'd like to do that is we have one rip pack currently on our rescue truck, and we see the need to have one on our engine. And the reason for that is the way we disperse our apparatus to different types of calls, this one that it's on now doesn't necessarily go to some of the other calls where the engine would. So having this at, this rip pack would be beneficial in that respect. And it is a little bit cheaper for the rip pack compared to an overall SCBA, so it is saving a little bit of money as well.
Glad you understand all that. Any questions from council on Chief Tupper's request? Mr. Beatham?
How many, how many air packs do we have at this particular time?
Currently, we have 26 units that are on the trucks, dispersed amongst all the trucks. We do have eight spares, which as a result of this replenishment program, we have over the years saved out eight, and then one rip pack. Those eight spares, they remain in the, in the back room that after we come back from a call, we can immediately put trucks back in service while we're cleaning and disinfecting and drying the packs that we may have used on a particular call.
And the ages of most of these packs, I would assume that they're all well within the 10-year projected life expectancy?
Yes, they, they're varying, obviously, because we have done this replacement program since, what did I say, FY 11.
Any other questions, some other council numbers for the chief? Seeing none, council action on his request?
Mr. Chairman, resolved to approve Council Order Number 121604, to purchase three Scott Self-Detained Breathing Apparatus and one Scott Rip Pack from Fire Tech and Safety for $18,950, which is 15 six for three SCBA's, and $33.50 for a rip pack from the budget 210-53006 SCBA.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Just, Mr. Chairman, I could ask the chief, is that money's in the budget?
Yes, it is.
We can cover it.
Okay. Good.
If I remember right, wasn't it this year that we took it out of capital?
Correct.
Because it's reoccurring every year and put it in your operating budget?
Correct.
Okay. All councils are satisfied? You are, then I request a motion?
Just did.
We have a motion.
We did?
On the table.
Really?
Yeah, I read it.
Yes, you did. Long-term memory. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Beatham? That's right. Good thing it's a short meeting. All those in favor? unanimous.
Thank you.
Now, something perhaps a little more exciting. Public hearing and discussion on the proposed enactment of an ordinance entitled Recreational Marijuana Prohibition Ordinance. We're here tonight because of the actions from our citizens. The state of Maine have authorized the sale of medicinal recreational marijuana. And at this point, I guess we've had some discussions back and forth that perhaps that would be signed and possibly out on the face for us to deal with very quickly, reading and seeing some of the issues that have happened across the nation and other states that have approved it. There are different businesses and types of things, and we're not sure where they would be appropriate or how it would be done, and also we're not sure what the state legislature is going to do with it when it is finished. Whether we all agree with the law or not, it appears to be heading ahead. I had heard today that the recount is, either been, the request to recount has been removed, and the governor may sign it. We may have this as a, as a law fairly soon. So not being sure of what we are going to see for laws and how to deal with it in something that is fairly new, we have this recreational prohibition ordinance in front of us until we know what's ahead. Our city planner is now standing at the podium, supplied us with a bunch of very good information, which we've all reviewed and discussed. Would you like to add anything, a little short?
Yeah, no, not really. I think you have the Legalization Act, you have the proposed prohibition ordinance, and you have the memo. The three things I would mention is, A, this exempt, except, exempted from this ordinance is personal use, medical marijuana under that act. And what this has, it has a sunset clause for two years, meaning the ban, that ordinance is good for two years unless you decide to do something extended, whatever you want to do in between, but if you were to do nothing, that would expire within, in two years.
I guess in part of in doing this is that, I guess we're not sure what we're going to have and where we want it, and we're not necessarily saying that this is permanent. This allows us to make some decisions and see, see what the laws are. And I think this is very, any questions from the council to the city planner before I open the public hearing?
No, I'll, I'll ask after the public hearing. I want to hear what the public says.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. At this point, then, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing for, to offer some input on our proposed ordinance, as I see, just as this gentleman has, please come to the podium. Please state your name for the record.
My name's Joseph Lusardi. I'm the Executive Director of Maine Organic Therapy.
Yes, you are. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to speak on behalf of Maine Organic Therapy and the 1,500 patients that we serve in this community. I just kind of wanted to give some clarity to my perspective of what I think is going to happen by the enactment of this new law. So the governor has come out and said that today, he's kind of done a 180 on what he, his original statement, saying that he does not want to run two programs. They want to repeal the Medical Marijuana Act, so, you know, I, I just feel compelled to, for the 1,500 voices, to make a statement of, you know, the impact that this will have on, on the community and the patients. I really believe that this will be the demise of our business. We've been a business in this town for almost six years now. We've yet to have one incident, and I'm not up here to pat myself on the back by any means, but, you know, we try to give $1,000 every month to a different charity in this community. We've given over 500 turkeys Thanksgiving to needy and homeless people, and, and these are things I want to continue to do and hopefully even bigger and better down the road. So I really believe if you enact a prohibition, you are putting us out of business and putting these 1,500 people to the street, to the black market, and you're going to create a vacuum for a black market in this community. Because if you live in Down East Maine, this is where you, if you are a drug dealer, this is where the population is, and this is where they're going to come. And if you want to have drug deals going on in every parking lot in this town, then that's what this prohibition will do. I ask that you table this for a month and let me bring you more information and speak to you and educate you on, on the ramifications of this. And I just think just rushing to this decision is, is a mistake. There is emergency legislation in place right now to enact like what Oregon has done, which they've let the medical dispensaries immediately start serving this adult-use market. So there isn't this black market of crime that's going to just unleash on this community, which also helps bringing tax revenues to the state immediately instead of to drug dealers. So I truly believe that this has a good chance to pass, this legislation, so. So again, I just, I ask the council to please reconsider this ban and, and let me bring you more information, let me meet with you, let me try to help educate you on, on what all of these ramifications, you know, will be. And I can certainly try to answer any questions right now, but.
I have one.
Mr. Fortier?
Have you read our proposed ordinance?
Yes, I have.
Section 5 exempts from the prohibition, personal use of marijuana and medical use of marijuana. It's not going to affect?
No, it will, because right now, a patient has to go spend $200 to get a recommendation from a physician. Governor LaPage, he believes that all of these patients will just be absorbed into this recreational market, so they don't want to run two programs. So that he believes that this is just going to be an over-the-counter, so these 1,500 patients that we serve will now just be able to get their medication through this new entity. So I think over a year, like, there's no incentive for a patient to go spend $200 to go get a doctor recommendation when they can just, they don't need that anymore. So over a year, I just believe the medical program will disappear, and then they're just not going to fund the program at that point, and they'll just dissolve it, and it'll turn into this new entity. So you're really not giving a place now for these patients to purchase.
You, we're not affecting your business. The governor may, but we're not.
Okay.
No, indirectly.
Okay, Mr. Lusardi, you've had, we've heard you.
Yes.
Mr. Fortier, I understand what you're saying, and as that, our ordinance doesn't affect you, and as Mr. Fortier is pointing out, what the state of Maine does, we have no control over, and what Mr. LaPage wants, we have no control over. What we're concerned about is what goes on within the City of Elswood. We're not putting our head in the sand, we're actually trying to buy ourselves some time and actually do an intelligent approach to this.
No, and I appreciate that.
And having something, and having something appear here that at three years down the road, that we said, wow, how did that happen? There's some interesting ancillary businesses that take place with this, not just the sale and, and that. There are clubs, and there are other odds and ends that is out right about Colorado and California, they're all doing the growing pains. This is new business for the country.
Absolutely.
So I understand what your, your fears are, and I think we're aware of that, but we cannot control what the state does. Mr. Fortier? And it's pretty much what we were.
No, I, that's, that's true. I just don't think what we're doing is, is protecting him, it's not hurting him.
Yeah, it's, it's had no effect.
I respectfully disagree.
I wanted to add that the reason that we took the stance the way we did was actually to not just protect you, but to prevent folks from, the state has not laid out their guidelines yet, what the rules are, what the licensing rules are going to be. So we really can't act on any sort of storefront for recreational marijuana.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking for that tonight.
You've been speaking, and she's done. Please be quiet.
So this was to legitimize or give us the tools to say to companies who are wanting to come in and open a storefront, that we can't right now. We, right now, we have a prohibition, and until we understand what the state is going to lay out, and what the rules are on the licensing, you know, what all of that means, there's no way for us to move forward. But this prevents the caregiver-type folks and all those other entities and ways of distributing or selling this product. It keeps, it gives us a safe zone until we can figure out what the rules are, so we can do whatever we need to do responsibly and in a controlled manner. It's not to, to sanction or hurt what you're doing, it's to prevent anything coming in before we're ready for it to come in. And, and when you use the word prohibition, it has a very negative and final sort of feel to it, and we understand that, but the fact is, we can't do anything right now because we don't have the, the findings or the decisions from the state on how we would be able to move forward with it if we were to move forward with it. So that's just, it, it's a way of, of stopping everything until we have all the information, all the guidelines and the licensing information that would allow us to move forward however we're going to move forward. And it's the two-year with the sunset clause. If stuff comes out and the council decides to do something different, we can come out of this at any point in time. It's not, two years is not, we don't have to wait two years. Does that make a little?
No, no, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I'm not, I'm not here to ask for, to sell it tomorrow, because that's not a reality. It's more, I just feel that the, the governor came out yesterday and said he wants to end the medical program. So it's my obligation to speak for 1,500 medical patients. Where are these people going to go? So you either, you either give them a place to go, or they're going to go to every parking lot in this town from drug dealers, and that's the reality of it.
But he can't end that program until he has rules in place for how the rest of it went out.
Correct.
And this just protects us until we know what those rules are, and we can figure out the right way to move forward.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crossway, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lusardi, glad to have you here tonight. The governor says a lot of things.
Oh, I know.
You've noticed?
Yes.
Okay. But you said something back in, when you were at our April meeting, that you may not have any part of this when the recreational thing comes down.
Correct.
In fact, you were, you said, in fact, I'm not even for it, the way it was written at that point, and I hope it fails.
Yes.
So was it the, the statement by the governor that changed your mind, or is it just a matter of, purely from a business point of view?
Well, no, it's a matter of, it's a matter of, now I believe that the medical program will be gone, and it's my responsibility for these 1,500 people, and I don't want them to have to go back to the street like they had to do before this. So I, and to protect my business at this point, I mean, we'll be out of business, and these 1,500 people will be on the street.
And I could say, well, you may not get a business if, even if the medical closes down, you, you may be able to, I don't know, shift your emphasis to the recreational? I don't know. But we don't know how that's going to play out, we have no idea. I don't think the governor's just going to sign a bill next week and it's law automatically, I think it's going to have a rough ride through the legislature this year, and, you know.
No, but like I stated earlier, I think, like, there is emergency legislation that's going to be presented.
Yep.
To allow for the existing, because the infrastructure is already in place, like, we are highly regulated, they trust us. So, like, when they just say marijuana passed legally in the state of Maine, like, people don't know what that means, so everybody, it's a free-for-all now. So the state wants to actually give people, all right, we have eight dispensaries that we trust, so let's let them people go there, and let's let the tax revenue come into the state rather than to drug dealers, which, that's the reality, that's what's going to happen.
Appreciate your input, and you've made some valid points, but you're in the same area that we are with laws that haven't been made yet, with no idea what's going to happen, with a governor, as Mr. Crossway points out, says a lot of things, and has what we know is a not-good-working relationship with the legislature, so what we do have is something that's emergent and happening now, and I, and we felt that it was important to take a stance for the city.
I understand.
It's one of the, and one of the, the offshoots is a, some type of a marijuana lounge, and I, you know, do we want on Main Street, you know, things like that. So that's what our minds say.
I'm not here advocating for that.
No, but that's also part of what can happen if it's not, because we don't know what it is, and they say it's uncharted territory. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else like to come to the podium and offer some input on that? Please do.
David Legere. I'm here also to, I guess my concern was the two-year timeline. Ms. Hudson, you did mention that it can be revisited prior to that. My understanding is other communities that are looking at trying to pull the reins back on the whole licensing of recreational facilities until legislation actually, I guess, is settled out and they figured out what's going to go on. When I read the agenda and saw it was a two-year time limit, I found, I personally thought it was very, rather presumptive, because we don't know what the legislation's going to be yet. I personally think something like a six-month moratorium, to see what happens over the next six months, and then look at it then in six months, and maybe go further. Putting a two-year limit on it to get it revisited prior to that, you know.
There are limitations on the moratorium, and having 180 days and you're allowed another 180 days really doesn't do us any value at this point, because there are no rules to read, to use, to make a decision on, to create the ordinance. So, that being said, you've got a year tied up before you have a law in front of you anyway. We don't have any idea how fast the legislature's going to act. I think we're all reasonable on the council and understand the importance of it and the desire, and it is, will become law. And as soon as we have something to look at and discuss, I think we plan on moving ahead. And what? And what will come out of that, you'll see as, as time goes on, because there will be public hearings held, there will be meetings held, everyone will have input in it. But some of the requests, information requests that have been received at Sea Hall were interesting and as you read about what's happened outside, yeah, two years may seem like a lot, but that's the outside of it and I honestly think you'll see it happening more quickly than that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Anybody else like to add?
Steve Joy, Ellsworth resident. The last time I was here, the city planner and this council voted six to one in favor and made a decision to allow the movement of the medical marijuana dispensary into a commercial district, which allowed them to move into a Class A commercial space in the heart of Ellsworth and in the heart of Ellsworth Commercial District, because in the planner's words, they are halfway between a pharmacy and a liquor store. Okay. So then what I would ask you today is, what's the difference between walking into Shaws to buy a bottle of bourbon or walking into a store to buy an ounce of pot? Now that the voters in the state of Maine have passed a law for the recreational use of marijuana, you're about to say that you are protecting the local citizens' health, safety and welfare as these activities constitute a nuisance? That's what your new proposal says. Included in the new law are retail cultivation facilities or growers, retail marijuana product development and manufacturing, along with retail marijuana testing facilities. Then there is the retail marijuana stores and marijuana social clubs. The first three would be classified as manufacturing and the second two are retail. Is manufacturing new to Ellsworth? Is retail new to Ellsworth? Does the planner need two years to figure out what other states have been doing for years? The social clubs are the only place you are publicly, you can publicly use marijuana. None of the others allow consumption. I would also ask you, everybody's hiding behind rulemaking, I would just say to you, the bill is twenty-seven pages long. I don't know if you've read it, but it is very specific about what you can and can't do. The rulemaking, I don't think, will be much more than the twenty-seven pages that are I think the other thing I read in one of the letters about Ellsworth Image, all of you except Mark Blanchett and Don Hudson, Eily to me, voted to put medical, a medical marijuana dispensary next to our hometown bank and the AT&T store in a very high-traffic location. Somehow you and the planner think that everyone who crosses into their store is in cancer treatment. I assure you that they're not. Nothing against them. They made a good business decision and I don't, I don't have a palm with that. I thought I made a good business decision based on the zoning at the time. I invested two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a building that all of a sudden can't be used for, it, it has a few purposes. And at that time, they had a, they still have a monopoly here in, in Washington and Hancock County. They were a destination. It is the next step, the legalization, that makes it different. And so again, when I was here, the planner said, and I quote, "If the marijuana law passes, I will be back to the council for a hundred and eighty-day moratorium." Now it seems that she and the council need two years. I believe rulemaking will probably take six to nine months, although the law is twenty-seven pages long, so it is already very specific about what can and can't be done in relation to recreational manufacturing and sales. The first four, I would say, or the first three, in other words, if, if there's a company that wanted to open a business in Ellsworth to test marijuana, not sell it, test it, you're saying, nope, we're not doing that. If they want to manufacture candy and brownies and whatever else, but not retail it, no, they can't do that. So I would just say that, um, I've lost my place. I made a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in Ellsworth based on the existing zoning, but all of you determined that Ellsworth should have a medical marijuana dispensary anywhere in the commercial district. I've concluded from your vote, your vote last time that marijuana isn't that bad and can be anywhere in Ellsworth Commercial District, or it is personal sometimes when it may come to me or any other business that perhaps you did or didn't like. If I wanted to use my building for any of the proposed new business opportunities, I will have to wait two years while our business, leisure and life proponents decide how to deal with the monster that is marijuana. It is here. It is in our commercial district right now. What has been determined by the plan of the council and manager is that a medical marijuana dispensary is merely a pharmacy, but a retail medical marijuana retail outlet is a threat to our citizens' health, safety and welfare as a nuisance. That's what it says in your proposed ordinance. You cannot smoke on-site, it is the law. If you look at the new law that has passed, none of those, other than the social club, allow use on-site. These are just recreational users. They're buying it, they're taking it someplace and using it, just like you might your bottle of bourbon. It is a retail store, a testing facility with no retailing of anything, a growing facility with or without retail. It is the cooking or combining for retail on-site or somewhere else. Maine Organic Therapy has, and again, I have nothing to do with, they, they have been great tenants with me. This isn't about them, this is about your ordinance now. Has been granted a monopoly in Hancock and Washington Couns, County. This council has allowed them to move anywhere, anywhere they want in Ellsworth Commercial District, but no other business person can do anything of the like for two years. I'm proposing you take one year to study, read and develop some sort of ordinance that makes sense without just saying we will take two years to even begin the process. The, the law, as I said, and as I said, I also have a copy of it, is very specific. The rulemaking, I think, they'll drag their feet, but I would also say to you, the law is so specific that you know what the rules are going to be now, if you take the time to look at it. Thank you.
Steve, while you're there, they, we have the ordinance that was supplied with us. We've been through that and you know very well that the state of Maine, the legislature will work that ordinance and there'll be many changes in it. We don't know for sure what it is and the two years is simply an end game. It doesn't mean that we're going to wait two years.
You're going to vote and you're proposing-
We're not naive enough to believe that there isn't marijuana being used in the community now. I understand all the ramifications that go with it, a lot of the ramifications. But we also, it takes a little bit of time and a little forethought.
And I'm not, I, I'm not telling you you should rush into it. I, I think there, you do need some time and, but if it does come out in nine months, the, the bill itself is very specific right now. It will have minor tinkering with it?
Minor or major, but we're not sure of that. We've discussed with a couple of legislatures and be interesting to see how it goes.
Well, you know, you know it's coming. I, I would just say, and so-
That's right.
It isn't going to come as a surprise. And so the two-years issue to me is just something that should be looked at. The one-year issue, it gives, let's say it takes six to nine months for rulemaking, gives you three months to look at it. If you look at the law now, you'll know what's coming. And there'll be some, you know, there's going to be some tweaking. I don't think there's any doubt about that. What the extra year is, that's the one I'm curious about. And especially for the non, I, I get it. The, the social club to me is something like, ooh, that's something, I don't know. But we have bars.
I understand that, but also as far as getting anything done, some of us on this council are veterans of the ten or eleven-year redo of the zoning ordinance, so I know it doesn't happen quickly at times. But this is only one specific thing and I think once we do have something, there will be some action in that direction, discussions. The two years gives us a sunset and gives us an outside that does require something. More than likely, we'll be six months to a year before something comes out of the state final and we'll see what we have then and we'll work with that.
And I'm one of those few that says, well, then why not do it for a year and renew it if you have to? In other words, you'll be given those three months to, I don't know how long it will take, you'll be given rulemaking and so at that point, three months, I mean, that, that seems like a pretty, a good amount of time, especially with the specific, specifics, I can't say the word, but the specifics that are in the, the law now, it is very specific. So-
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Tara Young and I'm a mom of three kids. One is in grade school and two are in middle school. And I think the two-year moratorium is just the beginning of a good start. I would like to not see retail marijuana in Maine at all, but certainly not in our community. I think that the medical marijuana is a whole different issue and I would like to see them kept separate, hopefully that will remain. But I think the biggest concern is the retail products. The, um, the products that we see coming out of Colorado are stunning and really, um, many of them are marketed toward children. It looks like there's cotton candy, pixie sticks, gummy bears that look just like the gummy bears that your children would eat. I have pictures, if you're interested in, in seeing, these are pictures of the products from Colorado. I'm concerned about these products getting into schools and kids getting them knowingly or unknowingly. We've already had issues with that without retail sales. Kindergarten classes, entire kindergarten classes getting marijuana brownies, things like that have already happened. This is only going to make it worse. The normalization and kids seeing this more often is not going to be good for our, our kids trying more, more marijuana and then also possibly moving into other drugs and also with public health, if they're smoking, we have the same concerns that we do when people are smoking cigarettes. I don't think it's good for our community. We're going to see more costs associated with it than what small amount we get from taxes. Our tax rate in, in Maine is less than half of what the Colorado tax rate is proposed. The current proposed tax rate for Maine is less than half of what they're charging in Colorado and it makes up for less than one percent of their general funds. It's not a significant amount of money and it's not going to serve our community well. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else in the audience?
My name's Deborah Porter. I'm a registered nurse and I'm a Realtor and I'm here to speak about both the health and the business that I see behind this proposal. I think your moratorium is a big mistake and I challenge that you do a little research. I just happened to go to a graduation in Gunnison, Colorado this spring. A good friend of mine's daughter graduated and while I was there, I thought, you know what, I'm going to do my research. And I went and visited nine shops in that town. I was, you know, went in and interviewed every one of them. You can't go into that shop without buzzing your way in, showing them your driver's license, they zip a picture of both sides of it, then they open and unlock the door and let you in. And they only let a few people in at a time and you can go in and ask questions, look at the products, see what they had. After doing that, then I asked a lot of the owners, you know, what do you see as a business potential, you know, if it becomes legalized in Maine? I wanted to know how it was going to affect real estate, nursing, health, you know, things like that. And what they pointed out was that initially Gunnison, Colorado put a moratorium on it and they waited a year, year and a half, two years, whatever. Finally, they looked at the town of Crested Butte, which was just north of them, and they were like booming. Their taxes, property taxes went down, their sales tax went up. Economically, they saw, you know what, this is foolish, why are we doing this? So in June of two thousand fifteen, and you can go right on their website, you can see the minutes of all their meetings, all their proposals where the shops stepped in and the zoning, they went around the town and put, you know, thousand-foot limits from the schools, the churches, things like that. All the fees to establish a shop are on there. And then look at their budget, watch it, how their income goes up from two thousand fifteen to now. And anyway, I just think that the city of Ellsworth should not put a moratorium on it and I think they should move along with the state. If we make it illegal here, don't lose shops here, they're going to be in Blueville, they're going to be in Bar Harbor, they're going to be around here. The other towns will benefit. I'd like to see Ellsworth's property taxes go down. I think they're pretty high.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
Unfortunately, we won't have sales tax towards, for Ellsworth with this, but we don't have, the, the tax revenue is collective goes to the state, it doesn't go to, you have great points and I, and I, and I appreciate the research you did, that, just that one issue that you raised, that one thing, is maybe Colorado has local sales tax where they are able to bring in revenues, but that's not the case for Ellsworth.
Yeah, they had an excise tax and a sales tax.
Which we aren't able to do, unfortunately.
Right. I'd be happy to share this folder or go on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to comment on this? Saying none, public hearing is now closed. Questions? Mr. Fortier or somebody, councilman? Mr. Fortier?
I'll let everybody know that I'm one of the guys that's been arguing the last month during our finance committees, that if marijuana, recreational marijuana is a legal commodity in the state of Maine, why the hell are we trying to stop it? Are you going to stop broccoli next week? But I've been swung to the side of doing it right. I can guarantee you that I'm not going to wait two years. I'll be on this, pushing these folks to do our due diligence and get the, as soon as the rule, I'm, I serve in the legislative policy committee with Maine Municipal. We see what the legislature does to people's referendums. They massacre them. The governor massacres funding issues, taxing issues. So I agree that we need the final rules and the final law and then it's full steam ahead to get this settled so that Ellsworth can be part of the future, not hide ahead in the sand. But we need the time and, and quite honestly, right now, I think staff are getting so many inquiries from out-of-state companies that is unbelievable that they're getting their work done. We need to step back, take a little breath, do it right, do the research, make sure everything's all right. I'll volunteer to go to Colorado. And so we can come out with a product that will face the test across the street in court, face the test with our offices in the field and does good for the entire community, not just a couple people. So I've been against it, putting on the prohibition, but I see the need for it now in the short term, but I promise you, I won't let it go two years.
Thank you, Mr. Fortier. Any other councilmen? Ms. Hudson? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So I was, I was leery about how the two-year prohibition would appear to the public because it sounds like we're taking a hard and fast stance about not allowing this in Ellsworth. And I agree with what some of our guests have said and what Gary said, that it's here and there's no point in pretending it is not here. But without rules from the state, there's no way that we can responsibly or even possibly issue licenses and, and allow it to come in. This was a way of, for the city to protect itself and sit back until we had the rule, the rules from the state and what, how this was going to play out so we could execute something that fit the city and do it responsibly and to protect us. We certainly don't want somebody popping up in a shop somewhere and begin selling it because it's legal and then we have to try to either get them out without the rules to do it, without the backing to do it, and then have them grandfathered into something because they were there before the rules came out. And that's what we're just trying to prevent. The two years, it's, as I see it, is a chance to get all that straightened out and it's not a hard and fast two years. And I look forward to seeing what the state comes out with so that we can move forward responsibly with how to implement this within our community the best way that we can. But I was, I was leery of the impression that it would give with the wording of it, that it was a two-year prohibition. And as far as I'm concerned, it was, it was just that, a way to take a timeout, protect our staff and our community from having things infiltrate before we were ready to handle it and we had the legal guidelines or the, or the legal tools to, to address it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well put. I appreciate it. Anybody else? Mr. Beathel?
Yeah, it's, this is, this is one of those things that a lot of people are going to have a lot of things to say about it. And that's one of the things that we have to do is, we have to allow the people to express themselves to us so that we know what we want to do and where- themselves to us so that we know what we want to do and where we want to go. And waiting until all the rules are in place is probably not going to be necessary before we start holding public hearings and other things on some of the things that are in this new law. This new law has portions in it that where you can consume this in a, well, in a club. Where do you want those clubs? As a citizen, where do you want it? We spent a lot of time over the last few years developing a vision for this, for this community and where it's going in the future. And if we don't take the time now to do it and do it right, we're going to lose that. That's what we need. We need the time to do that. And we need to start having those meetings before the legislature gets done, as long as we know that there's going to be certain aspects of it that we need to deal with. So waiting for the full two years? No, it probably won't happen. Not unless the legislature takes an awful lot of time to get things done, which potentially could happen. But I think that we need to allow the input from the public as well and that's why we need the time.
Thank you. Mr. Crossley?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just a couple of comments here. As far as knowing what the people want, the people have already spoken. This is one of the highest voter turnouts we've had in state history. This, this piece of legislation or this referendum passed by three-tenths of 1% across the state for it. And in the city of Ellsworth, the voters voted against it by a margin of almost 8%. Do we represent the people of Ellsworth as a representative body or don't we? That's my question. They've already spoken and spoken pretty loudly. So I'm not going to support something that the people have already told me, we're not for this, we're against it, doesn't matter to us how the rest of the state goes, that's their business. And as far as anything else popping up around us, as we're hearing over and over again, it's already all around us and with us, so I don't think that's the major issue that we need to, that we need to concern ourselves about. And the inferences that have been made that the state, any state legislature would perhaps massage or mishandle a citizen's referendum, I just can't handle that. That's just, that's just too personal right there. But it can happen and it will happen. And there already are opposing and competing bills that are coming in, so this thing has a long, long way to go yet. I just want to say that I believe the people have spoken. I believe we need to take a long, long look at this and let's not just look at it from a business or economic development point of view. I think we can gain in economic development strategy a whole lot better than concentrating on this. So whether it takes two years or whatever it takes, I'm for taking the time and either doing it right or just opting on it altogether.
Thank you. Mark Blanchett, would you like to infuse your knowledge?
I would.
Insight?
We have a new legislature coming in. We have no idea what they want. They could be calm and, no commercial would say calm and collected, or they could be like the governor that will just shoot off and say almost anything. And until they do, until they give us firm rules, it's the same word that's being used all across the table tonight, other rules. We have to have rules. I don't want to get into any game where I don't have rules to play by. And it's for that reason, right there, that I would be in support of this motion.
Any other comments from councils? Public hearing has been held. We've had the discussion, that would be item 14. I'll move to item 15. Council order 121605, request to enact the ordinance enabled in recreational marijuana We've had the discussion, we've had a public hearing. Any more comment or can we have a motion?
You calling the question? Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to enact an ordinance entitled recreational marijuana prohibition ordinance.
Second. Any more discussion? Saying, oh, Mr. Beatham, sorry.
One, one thing is, in the clarification of the sunset clause, I'd like it to specifically say the sunset clause is two years. That'll fall two years, that'll fall two days after the December meeting 2018. Two years. And the way it reads right now, it's, it's a little vague.
Mr. Fordy?
And to clarify that, in section seven of the proposed ordinance, it has the word "within" two years. If we take out the "within" and put in "in two years" from adoption, which it's in there. The "within" is, is the word that shouldn't be there. I think it should be "in two years." That's, that's correct.
In your motion, would you consider like adding this language and say effective then to what Mr. Beatham said? Just so it's clear of when it becomes effective, so when therefore, when the two-year starts.
The effective date is already listed as the day's date, 19.
Can I do that?
Yes. So it would fall two years after, that would be December 19th, 2018.
So I guess to do this and do this so we don't go across the street, Ms. Chairman, I would offer friendly amendment to amend section seven of the proposed ordinance, removing the "within" from the first sentence. So the sentence will read, "This ordinance automatically expires in two years," no, excuse me, expires two years after the effective date unless it is repealed or reauthorized by the city council.
Mr. Crossley, would you accept that?
Yes, I'll accept it, but that amendment's coming in for somebody who said it wasn't going to take two years, so we just need to be consistent here tonight.
In the second, you'll agree?
Yes.
And the reason behind that, Ms. Chairman, is "within" is not specific. Now we have a definitive date on the calendar.
That's fine. Any further discussion or modifications? All those in favor? unanimous. Item 16, adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? He's unanimous. Thank you. That's it.